You're watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 25th meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
It is 3 o'clock and welcome to the regular meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority. Can I please rise from the bench? Effectively gentle to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Hutton, roll call, please.
Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Michael Vincent.
Present.
Stacy Bennie. Kenneth Fly. Talani Rayna.
Present.
Jacob Mooneyhand.
Present.
Robert Looney.
Present.
We got them all.
So, next on the agenda.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the regular board meeting minutes, May 3rd, 2023.
I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Some of them.
Save it.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Bennie.
Aye.
Talani Rayna.
Aye.
Jacob Mooneyhand.
Aye.
Robert Looney.
Aye.
Oh, next on the agenda, yes. Any communications?
Communication? No, we don't have any communication.
Okay. So, staff reports, then.
Staff reports. The first staff report is the contractor report. Are you any clusters?
What report are we on right now, Ms. Hutton?
The first report is the contractor report. Just the last report after the meeting. Then the next report is the work order report. Brady?
All in all, for the month of April, we had a total of 86. Seventy-four have been completed and 12 were still working on. Average days is about 1.05. There's been a few charges for lockouts that were pretty consistent, only we killed the same person, but other than that, there's no charges.
So, where we at? Can you give me the work orders again?
We have a total of 86 for the month of April. Seventy-four have been completed and 12 are still incomplete.
Any questions? Mr. Mooneyhand.
Brady, the 12 that are not complete was as CJ.
Um, you know, it varies. It could be that they're gone and I just haven't got them back to complete them. If I can check your ID, you can answer.
Mr. Vincent?
I see that one of the priorities under routine, what does that mean? Can you just give a couple other priorities? Is there a priority of urgent or how does that work?
Um, so normally, if we're here in the office, I probably just use routine. So, that would be like a fog sink, fog toilet, things of that nature. But even like for an emergency call, when he gets it over the weekend before I can come in create a work order and then he can close it after it's already completed. So, I never really mess with the priority. They pretty much just say routine.
Mr. Lommy?
I see one that says routine, but it's $369. That seems a little more than routine. What was that?
What page is that?
Uh, page 2.
So, that's just material. So, that's just the prices of...
Hold it, please.
Um, and looks like I've got it in the water here. I'm not quite sure, but I can give that information for you. Give it to you.
Any other questions? CNN, Ms. Hutton, next.
Okay, the next report is the incident report. We had only one incident and it was here at Billabong Gardens. And then it has the calls afterwards that was done in Lightcom. And then after.
Excellent.
Uh, the next report is the monthly budget. We are going to change this report and we're still in the process of making it simple. Um, but until we got it done, we still wanted to report what was spent in the month of April on there. What came in and what's spent. Okay? Um, if you, after that, if you look at, after that, Chris did make sure that you all had the capital funds that you referred to and the obligation mandate and the disbursement dates. And they're in color. They're not like this.
Yeah, that's some other side of this.
Mr. Vincent? Ms. Hutton, I know we were talking about smoke detectors and CO2s and you were waiting to get an order in on that?
Yes.
Is that under fire protection, water hydrants? Is that the charge there for April? Are we still waiting on that?
Basically.
It's on the second page. Number 4310.1.
I have the channel.
Utilities?
Yeah, I see. That might be that price. I'm not sure. Right off the bat, I can't remember the price, but I will check and make, see what it is.
See if it's in?
Mm-hmm.
If it's in, then we'll have it installed by in-house or we're contracting?
Uh, I'm trying to see if I can get it contracted out, but if not, we'll start working on it.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm surprised it had contracted out.
Any other discussion about the budget? Mr. Looney?
Well, I did have one quick question. The first line says, this first meeting was 4/12/2021. Does that mean that money's no longer available because we have obligations against it? I know there's an extension because of COVID, but...
What's that?
The very top, the yellow, it says obligation end 4/12, disbursement end 4/12, 19 or something like that. 23, are we still able to use any of that money?
No.
Okay. So, then the next one down.
I got you.
The obligation ended in 2021.
But the disbursement is...
So, you're still using that one?
Yes. The disbursement is eight. Anything 23, we can still give.
Like a contract, you know, getting fixed, so you can buy that money back?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other question, Mr. Looney? Mr. Vincent?
Just for clarification, as we learned on the workshop, this going up to the yellow line for the obligation ended or disbursement ended, that 22,000, that's money that we've lost.
Right. That was prior to being...
Okay. And for the, for the record, I just want to say, I officially named Mr. Looney our fund, head of our finance for the board. And moving forward, I hope that we can get him his financial report at least six days before our meetings so that he can go over them for us. If that's, if that's okay, Ms. Hutton, can we make sure that that happens? The monthly reports, Mr. Looney needs to get those. Would you need at least five days?
Yeah, I do. So, like the...
To his door, however, we gotta do it. It needs to be at his door so we can, we can go over it as well. All right.
Just, I'm not seeing it now. I'm trying to come up with questions.
Right. So, moving forward, that will be at your door. Mr. Looney will be dropped off and we'll have it.
Okay, um, the last report is that house report.
Any comments? No comments? Next on the agenda, Ms. Hutton?
Next on the agenda is the financing report that we've had that already. And the directors report, we look at the public housing report. But I also have to report that the RFP ended at 3 o'clock today. And so, all the packages were put in by stamped and dated by Brad. So, that ended today. The next thing that I need to let you all know that we have applied for the emergency grant to HUD, which would give us $200,000. And I applied for that to get the cameras in the doors. And the date is June, the number has to be... It's the month of June. I don't remember the exact date right now, but that grant has to be completed. So, we are applying for funding for that.
Ms. Bennie?
So, you said that the RFP's, the deadline was today, 3:00. When is the date? I forgot. I'm on the day.
Tomorrow.
That they have to, that's when you will make the decision on?
That's when we have the public opening and compare the dates. Yes.
Tomorrow at 2?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney, how many total bits did we get?
I'm not sure. I had Bradley handle that. It was four contractors that came out though.
Okay.
A total of two. Turn your...
Two, two minutes. Forward to two minutes. Any other questions? Next, Ms. Hutton?
Uh, next is the attorney's report.
Hey, Ms. Hutton, we have several things to report on this month's not hearing, which we've got so. I'll file five evictions for six persons. One person did volunteer to vacate. So, we have those coming up. We have noticed that the damages hearings are being set out further and further. So, there's usually in their eviction, there are two hearings. There's a possession hearing and then there's damages hearing. We've seen that the damages hearings are being set out further and further, further here in LaPorte County. And I want the commissioners to know that should affect the occupancy monthly because even if a tenant is evicted and that unit is vacant, it is voted for approved due to litigation. That's a new category that they've given over the past year. So, that shouldn't affect the occupancy rate. There was some conversation that the board had regarding possibly putting together a whistleblowing resolution. Our office did look into that and there's actually an Indiana statute that will govern that. Will govern whistleblowing here at a political subdivision. So, there wouldn't be no need to bring forth additional resolution of policy to the board. I had a copy of that statute to distribute to the commissioners if any commissioners interested in reading it. Our offices had some preliminary conversations with Director Hutton regarding Hotwell Housing Opportunity Modernization Act. She stated that the housing authority was on course to do everything necessary to protect the act. So, we're likely to see a resolution coming forward to put some down in the next meeting regarding that. So, we're going forward to that. That's just mostly about standardizing procedures between the public housing and the housing trust doctrine program because those programs were kind of made separately. They had separate standards. And HUD issued a rule to kind of standardize the process between the public housing and the housing trust doctrine program. Lastly, I'd like to address the incident report that the executive director did before earlier regarding the arrest of Mr. Baldwin on April 12th. Mr. Baldwin was arrested for violation of the trespass status here at the Michigan City House Authority. So, I know that there are good conversations about the trespass policy. Had it been in effect, had it been working? This is evidence that the trespass policy that the board passed is working as intended. With that, I'll entertain any questions from the board, if there are any.
Um, the bylaws, we just, we just all signed them. So, who would we decide from your office?
Because it has Jules Day down there, I will defer him on that. Along with the bylaws, and I'm sorry to get a little bit ahead of you here because I do see the bylaws and I'm unfinished business. But I do have something to discuss with bylaws and we need to ask questions.
Next, Ms. Hutton?
Subcommittee, you told it?
None.
Okay, new business, public interaction with staff, discretion.
Okay. Our message here, it was brought to my attention by residents and individuals who was present in the building and listened to the interactions of some of our tenants and our employees. The conversations are disturbing. The language that's being used is uncalled for. And I want to know what can we do as, since our attorney is here and Ms. Hutton, what can we do to make sure our staff is not threatened and have to put up with that kind of verbal abuse from anyone whatsoever? And it was also discussed at, it was also brought up at the tenant's meeting that we had with Lakeland Estates. Property manager, she brought it up. It's just, it's, it's out of hand now. So, what is it that we can do? Can we start serving them? Can we evict them or serve them? Is there something that will protect our employees?
In our lease.
For their conduct?
In the lease, there is a provision for that, that we could terminate a person's lease.
Yes. Mr. Chair, obviously, no member of staff, the housing authority shouldn't feel as if they're threatened for coming to work. This is a place where everyone wants to come do their job, do their job effectively in service to the residents. And if there comes for an event where a member of staff does feel like they were threatened by a resident, I would encourage that that member of staff document, discuss it with their supervisor. And then after the documentation is done, the supervisor conversation is done, it can be turned over to Executive Director Hutton or the designated person. It doesn't always have to go all the way up the ladder. But that is something that a tenant can be prepared for with calls. That is, as we started to say, in the lease. The opposite side, if it is a member of staff and a resident feels that they are being threatened, I would, I would encourage, obviously, that resident to report that to the property manager. If it's the property manager engaging in those activities, to report it to the executive offices. Whether or not individuals may have a history outside of the housing authority, that should not at any point disrupt the business, so to speak, of the housing authority.
Any commissioner would like to add a comment to this?
Mr. Vincent? Just have a question. If residents are having discussion with staff, should, should two staff members be in discussion or recording or what's to stop the he said, she said determination?
I would always encourage that if anytime there is a meeting with a resident, there can be two staff members present. I would always encourage that. But we know that in the day-to-day activities, that's not always possible. It could be, for instance, a member of maintenance who is carrying out a work order and passing by a unit and a resident gets into a altercation with that single member of staff. Sometimes you will have he said, she said situations and at that point, obviously, document. And you have to make a determination of credibility. But if anytime there is a member of staff meeting with a resident or if anytime there is a member of staff who has to make entry into a resident's home, I would encourage there be multiple members of staff.
Any other commissioners? If I may make a recommendation to the chair, I mean, to the executive director, I'm sorry. Could you please assign Ms. Rochelle to this, to all complaints and have a complaint form ready for the tenants as well as the employees here so that they can fill it out and we can keep it documented of the incidents that's happening in, in this office? And I encourage that every incident be reported, even if it's small, just report it. With that, that's on the agenda.
Setting items amended by laws, approval and signing.
Mr. Chair, as we stated previously, the bylaws that have been adopted by the board have not been signed. They are in effect. There were two amendments that were proposed by the commissioner and I've, it was in the board of board for consideration individually. And if the board wishes to incorporate these into the bylaws, the board can vote to do that individually. And the board can have that discussion. It is up to the board to have that discussion, but I've submitted it as...
If you do not mind, sir, can you read the First Amendment?
Sure. The First Amendment would, would govern, or I'm sorry, falls under the topic of board conduct as the board is aware that it is a code of conduct within the bylaws. The potential amendment states that during normal day-to-day operations of MCHA, a commissioner shall not disrupt operations without setting a meeting or have contacted the executive director prior to a violation to MCHA premises.
Ms. Hutton, since this is affecting you as well, has anybody been coming down here without contacting you first?
Meeting with me?
I don't know. Just coming down here, the day-to-day, has anybody been coming down here interfering with the day-to-day? I'm guessing that's what it's about.
Yeah.
Would you like to see this in the amendment? I mean, would you like to see this in the bylaw?
Yes.
As board members, it's up to us. All in favor, anybody who wants to move to accept that amendment?
I'm going to accept the amendment. It's reasonable.
Yes, there it is. Ms. Hutton, roll call, yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Aye.
Michael Vincent?
Aye.
Stacy Bennie?
Aye.
Talani Rayna?
Aye.
Jacob Mooneyhand? Robert Looney?
Aye.
And what's the Second Amendment?
Second Amendment is amendment for board procedure of meetings. As the board is aware, the board meeting is conducted pursuant to Robert's rules of order. Pursuant to Robert's rule, anytime a complaint is called, that is an immediate stop. It is similar to what an objection would be in court. It means we have a problem, anything stops and the problem is addressed. However, this amendment seeks to soften the point of order. It says, "When a commissioner calls for a point of order, the chairman shall give a three-second pause to a lively commissioner against whom the point of order is raised to finish speaking."
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept this amendment. Second.
Any discussion?
If we give an extra three seconds, in some instances, doesn't that kind of defeat the purpose of saying point of order? Like the whole point is to stop the discussion so that maybe something that's not supposed to be said doesn't continue to be said?
I agree with you and that's where I'm at with it as well. I would definitely vote no. When things get going, stop, keep running on and running on. That's what the point of order is. To stop it right there and give a ruling and move on. So...
Especially for like when we've had public conference and they start to say things we can't discuss in public. We give them three more seconds to keep discussing, but we just said we can't discuss in public. Again, it defeats the purpose.
Any more discussion? Mr. Vincent?
What is, how does this differ from the normal Robert rules of order on point of order?
When a point of order is called, the point of order takes precedence over everything else that is, that is happening at that moment. So, if someone were speaking about a topic and someone calls a point of order, the point of, the person who's speaking is generally supposed to stop. The chair recognizes the point of order and the person who raises the point of order immediately has the floor. That's done for a lot of different reasons. But it could be an item that's being discussed, is being discussed out of turn. It could be that the time for discussion on an item is over and it's a roll call and someone is attempting to engage in more discussion. That's the purpose of a point of order and that is how a point of order works under Robert's rule of order. However, the commissioners pursuant to the bylaws have the ability to modify the rules of Robert's rules of order at their, at their discretion. It states right here, "The procedure at all meetings of commissioners shall be governed by provisions of Robert's rules of order or a modified version." So, the commissioners do have the ability to modify Robert's rules to their, their liking. But that will be the difference. Under traditional Robert's rules, a point of order stops whatever was happening and the chair recognizes the point of order. Under this proposed amendment, the, a point of order will be raised. A person who is carrying out the action will get an opportunity to conclude and then the chair will address the point of order.
Any other discussion? On the roll call, Ms. Hutton?
Rodney McCormick?
Nay.
Michael Vincent?
Nay.
Stacy Bennie?
Aye.
Talani Rayna?
Aye.
Jacob Mooneyhand?
Nay.
Robert Looney?
Nay.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a comment?
I'm sorry. Let's move past the discussion. I feel strongly about this because we all know that there's been issues where things have been going a little bit extra in some of our meetings. And when a point of order has been called and, for example, if a situation is going on where someone's speaking and whatever they're talking about has gotten off-topic or whatever they're talking about has become personal or whatever they're talking about has gotten to a point where it's disrupted the meeting. In my opinion, a point of order would be called and I've engaged in this. A point of order would be called where that would, if I'm not wrong, it would stop that person. It would allow things to get back in order. Me myself, if I called a point of order, I would say, hey, this is off-topic, this is out of order, this is not on the agenda. And then therefore, it would give an opportunity to correct the process. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I think it's needed in light of that.
If I, if I may, Commissioner Bennie, I believe that you are actually in a position of innate for them on this thing.
Yes.
Because what this is stating is that by declining this amendment, when a point of order is called, things immediately stop. By accepting the amendment, the person who may be violating the order can continue to finish.
Okay, I thought it said, maybe I misinterpreted it, obviously, because I thought that it's saying, and I haven't read to really see it. It's saying, it just, it's basically kind of improved. Is that...
No, no.
It's enough, enough.
Continue the action.
And I wanted this way to be as, as true to the suggested letters that I was given.
Okay.
But it would allow the person who a point of order is called against to... Uh, but it would allow the person who the point of order is called against to continue to, uh, as I, as I use in parlance, land the plane. Right, to, to finish speaking, to, uh, conclude your thought as opposed to continue.
Okay. I think I, I think this is why I need a point of order if you're not doing follow-up. Just so, okay, yeah, I, so I think you and I are probably in the same mindset. We're looking at women here, so maybe our women.
Do you want, do you want to change your motion?
So I do want to change it then.
But Mr. Vincent has something, forgive me, Mr. Vincent?
No, I, I just wanted to know for our, our board here, because point of order has been shouted several times in a row and, and the, uh, accusing party has continued to move on. What is, what is our recourse if that happens?
The board can make a policy for, again, to modify Robert's rules, because under traditional Robert's rules, it, it's like many things where, uh, it assumes that everyone will be a good actor. It, it assumes that people will observe rules and follow rules. If the board would like to, as a, as a matter of process, put in place where if a point of order is not recognized and someone continues to violate after point of order is called, that an immediate recess of the meeting takes place, that can be done by, by board action and board approval, that can be done.
Correct me if I'm wrong, under Robert's rules of order as well, see, you can suspend, you, you can, you can, um, discipline or you can suspend a, a member after a hearing. You can, you have to give them due process, can you also hand down a suspension?
This is true, but as I turn back to the procedure, uh, the procedure of all meetings shall follow Robert's rules of order or modified version, except in any case where such rules are contrary to the provisions of federal or Indiana law. Pursuant to Indiana law, the board cannot suspend.
Okay, so we can't hand it down. So you want to change your motion?
I do, I strike for that motion.
Your vote?
Yes.
Your vote, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, forgive me.
So I strike it out.
So with that being said, they, they go yea.
Yes.
Yeah, they change it.
Yay, yay, yay.
Nay, I'm sorry. Yay, yes, yes. I was saying, yay, you too, that's what I mean, no.
So I'm, no, nobody, yeah, so it's six to zero.
Anything else with the bylaws, Mr.?
Sure.
So these bylaws are now binding and in effect?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's on the agenda.
Public comment?
Anyone here for public comment? Please, please state your name and your address for the record.
Mr. Perry, here in Washington City, 226 Maple Street. It's very convenient that public comment comes right now, because I have a question about the issue that you just addressed. If any of the chairmen, chairwomen of the board can stop dialogue by saying point of order, they, that can be used as, as a tool, just to silence. Wouldn't you recommend, uh, attorney, that, when, if I call point of order, that I cite the rule in Robert's rules of order that that person is violating?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, absolutely, and, and that's their.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, that's their implication, where if a point of order is called, the chair recognizes the person who's calling a point of order, they have to state what the violation of order is.
Thank you.
So I, I do apologize for not making that clear, uh, but, Mr. Chair, that is the process.
Yes, and, and, um, the last few point of orders has been decorum and we continue to say it, but that, that, that's that, so. I understand, everybody, yes, I understand it, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Yes. I just, um, Robert rules of order also comes in this, that we are going to behave in good faith. We are going to act in good faith. Uh, Robert rules of order, uh, a lot of people don't want to just read the rules for whatever reason, and that's fine. But then it gets to the point where we get out of control and things shouldn't be happening the way it is. And a lot of us feel frustrated and tired with the process as well. Um, but I appreciate you coming down to the meeting and seeing what's going on and, and, uh, hopefully in the future, I am definitely reaching out to Rodney Poe and some other individuals and hopefully they, they can put some legislation, legislation together to, to try to make it easier for us to get some kind of help in the fact that removing or disciplining commissioners that's, that just don't want to comply. With that being said, anybody else here for a public comment? Please step up or stand and please state your name and your address.
Washington City, 817 East.
Ms. Fleming, you have a floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you got a lim, please limit it to three minutes, no personal tax, forgive me, and no personal tax, thank you.
Okay. Uh, obviously I was coming to the meeting, um, because I was really trying to figure out with the housing authority, um, like the people that they have giving vouchers to. I mean, they have a limitation. And then I learned like a couple of days ago that they did have units that belonged to the housing authority. I know there's, a lot of them were brought up like, uh, quite a few times, so I was just trying to find out like, what is the, like, what is the process of those units and why the housing authority, even before this call, no one ever took the time out to fix those houses up for the residents?
From a board standpoint, I'll just answer what I know and then I'll turn it over to the executive director. Um, as you know, we were in troubled status, we took over from, uh, from the last board and the bad administrative, uh, running of the, the last board, of the last administration. Uh, there are two different entities, three, that's involved with the Michigan City Housing Authority. We have public housing, we got our, our non-for-profit, and then we have our homeowner buyer ship. So, um, the HDI, I will not speak here, because we have our own separate board and I will give you that date where you can come and talk about that. And we, we can address all the, um, HDI properties, this is the chair for that board and that's the vice chairman, Ms. Benny and Mr. Vincent. So we are, to put together a contract, we had to put out a, a proposal, we had to put out a request for our service and that's where we started already. And we are working on getting property managers and stuff in place. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our executive director, if she wants to respond.
At this time, we are working on getting units ready. So at this time, I can't tell you when those units will be ready, but we are working, moving forward, getting units ready. And we started right now in Lakeland.
And that was our goal, so we, we didn't, we didn't go into this without a plan. We have a plan and we have a goal and Lakeland was our first start. And, and Mr. Vincent, you've come to our, our next board meeting, we'll give you the date before you leave and you come to that board meeting to ask the same question and you'll get an answer over there on that one. Anyone else here for public comment or want to make a public comment?
Oh, you said, uh, you said some of them are underway, you can't tell, we're not going to be done. Uh, how many are underway?
Uh, that, you know, get ready, get done.
Yeah. How many units are, to answer her question, how many units are underway?
We're getting, Lakeland, we're getting seventeen units up there.
Seventeen units? Seventeen units in Lakeland?
Mm-hmm.
And are they started?
No, the RFP stopped today, basically we're going to do the opening tomorrow.
Okay. The little gentleman, what is the timeframe to get those ready?
Uh, it depends, um, how many units that the contractors have and, um, how bad the units are.
Is it, and the contractors lined up?
Yeah, they, they.
It's a RFP. RFP?
Yeah. I can't tell you the contractors until tomorrow, once we, uh, open the bid.
Ms. Fleming, did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, seventeen units in Lakeland, contractors are being tomorrow?
They're open, we're open, we're in the meeting tomorrow.
Who's in the meeting now?
Well, what, open, the pack, yeah.
There's only two submitted, right?
Yes, according to Brittany.
Yes. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
With that being said, we, I have, I don't know how Commissioner Comment got put back on the agenda, but I do have a comment that I, I'd like to, um, an apology, that I believe that this board owes Harris Law Firm. At our last meeting and the meeting before that, we had one commissioner make some serious allegations. Um, reference our attorney, it was, uh, uncalled for, unwarranted, and absolutely untrue. Um, I'm, I think all of us here are grateful to have your service, Harris Law Firm, and your experience to guide us through this, uh, some of the turmoil that we have experienced when we're trying to change, change this over to a good agency instead of a bad agency. Had it not been for you guys, I don't know where we would be. I know we'd probably be in bad shape, but we, we are, all of us are grateful and we appreciate your service and we're going to hope that we can continue this going. And you don't take offense to what was said and just hope that we can just keep working, because all of us don't share one, one person's, uh, opinion.
Well, I do thank you, uh, Chair, and our firm takes no offense if there's anything that we can do, uh, to be better. Uh, we listen to everything that's said, uh, and we are here to serve the client and the government.
Okay, and with that being said, my last comment, I was, um, unfortunately was given a video and I, me and Ms. Hudson went over it today. And I want to make it clear to the public, we have never deprived or denied anyone service or any work orders to their properties because we don't like anyone. That's, that's crazy, we will never do that, we have never done that. We have never, uh, criticized a board member because they continue to say that we need to open up units and get them done. We are all in agreement that we want our units up, we want all of them up and running, but it's a process. Our funding come from the federal government, it's hard. We have to follow their guidelines or else we won't have finance. So with that being said, I just, I want the public to know that we are here doing our best and we will continue to make strides to improve what we're doing here and we are not, we will never take anything personal. We are here to make sure our units are back up and running as soon as possible. You want to add anything to that, Mr. Vincent?
Yeah.
And I just want to say to you, um, to the attorney, I just find that it's totally inappropriate for any board member to go on a social media site and badmouth their fellow commissioners with the process that's in place. It's hurtful and it causes confusion to our community and that's not what we are about. Everybody on this board has put forth effort and, and, and their time and genuinely cares. It, it, it just, it just hurt me to my heart to see that video, but with that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hang on, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I wanted to, something that was brought up while we were talking, I should have had it prepared earlier. Um, we were going over the bylaws, we got a code of conduct. And then under removal, it says that the mayor may remove, uh, a board member from this contract. And then it says pursuant to IC Code 367189D. Could you explain what the process is if we did need to remove a board member that's being, that, that, I mean, under a code of conduct, they're not being, can they be removed without six pages of, you know, legal documents or, you know?
It is, if a mayor is either, he can speak to the process because of the process. It is not a, uh, it is not a fast process. Um, I, I believe that, uh, Mr. McCormick was on the board previously as well when, uh, board members were moved. It is a, uh, sometimes very costly process, because as, as Mr. McCormick stated, you have to go through due process protections. Every board member has what is known as a property interest in their, uh, in their seat on this board. And before they can be deprived of it, uh, there is a process that has to go through it. It's spelled out in that code where the mayor would have to, uh, bring forth formal charges against that particular board member. Uh, there will be a hearing set in front of an impartial magistrate. Uh, the mayor would, uh, have to prove his case, the board member could refute the case and ultimately a decision could be handed down. That decision is subject to judicial review in the court, Superior Superior Court. That judicial review is subject to appeal to the Indiana Court of Appeals. And that a hell of a decision is subject to transfer to the Indiana Superior Court. So I, I, I walk you through those processes, so you can hear how lengthy it is what you need to say, but as somebody that's been reporting, you have to hear what is lengthy to do, uh, so.
So despite the code of conduct, in fact, that we have rules as well expected to follow them, we have to weigh the hardship of actually being somebody to dealing with the hardship of them being here.
I, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, and that's definitely not that I can make.
Well, no, I'm not saying anything, I'm saying we need to be able to make that, this is, that's, that's what it comes down to.
But, but everything.
And just with the struggle of it, you're gone.
Correct, it, it, it's, it's not that, it's not that simple, it's not that easy, in a perfect world it would be. Um, I can tell you that as an attorney, I've, I've had situations where I've spoken with clients about settling claims because it was cheaper to just pay that claim than pay me to defend it. And some people will all, principle, but principle gets expensive. Uh, and that's, 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 that's something that every attorney I make in our firm has said, principle is expensive. Um, so it's just being mindful of that and always weighing factors.
I guess I'm just trying to see how we have any teeth as far as we're having, a code of conduct, like. If we can't sustain, we can't censure, we can't essentially do anything except for.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not. Options are always there.
Right.
Uh, and I'm not saying that, that the code of conduct is too close.
Okay.
Um, I'm not saying that at all. Uh, what I'm saying is that if it gets to a point where the commissioners feel strongly about it, uh, the commissioners, uh, might only have options.
Mr. Looney, I went through the process, it was, it was hurtful. It, to sit there and see the whole process, the mayor was there, we was in the audience and it was just, and, and honestly, and, and the money, the money that they charged to get the process done, it was kind of rough as well. I, I would, I think a lot of it comes back to the mayor's, i- if he makes the decision on what he's going to do. But I think one of the things that we can do is to maybe expedite things is maybe flip the bill. Because you have, no matter who it is, they have due process rights. And the process goes on and on and on and on, if they choose to appeal it all the way out, so. That's all I would like to add to that. Any other discussion? Anything, any other business? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.